Good evening, I call this meeting to order. It's the regular council meeting of June 24th, 2019. Will the clerk please take role?
Mayor Protemblis?
I'm here.
Councilman Corbett?
Here.
Councilman Geddings?
Here.
Counselor Grabstein?
Here.
Councilwoman Scott?
Here.
Councilman Soltis?
Here.
Mayor Hartwell?
Yes, I'm here. Would you please rise if you're able for an invocation led by Councilman Robert Corbett and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Infinite wisdom, we thank you for having given us the opportunity to meet here today, and we ask most humbly for a blessing of our gathering. Brighten our eyes with greater understanding, enrich our hearts with compassion and courage, and again receive our gratitude for this opportunity of fellowship, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. Can I have a motion to appoint Ramona Sanchez as the acting clerk for this regular meeting?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So moved.
Thank you, is there support?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Geddings?
Support.
Thank you, any discussion on appointing Ramona Sanchez as the acting clerk this evening? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no, the motion carries, thank you Ramona. I believe there's an addition to tonight's agenda, what's the wish of council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Under Reports D, I believe it's D.
Yes.
I would move to add approval of the recommendation of legal counsel with respect to the litigation of Sakura versus Madison Heights.
Thank you, is there support?
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Scott?
Support.
Thank you, motion was made by Councilman Corbett, seconded by Councilwoman Scott, to add an item to the agenda under Reports D4, to approve the recommendation of the Special Environmental Counsel and City Attorney regarding the matter Sakura v. Madison Heights. Any discussion on adding this item? All in favor to add signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, was there discussion? Oh, okay, we'll redo the vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no, the motion carries to add. Are there any other additions or deletions to the agenda? Okay, thank you, we can go to a presentation, a very important presentation regarding a dementia-friendly community resolution. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
City Council has requested to resolve that the city of Madison Heights will support the city's participation in becoming a dementia-friendly community in partnership with the Michigan Dementia Coalition and the wider community, and we have a resolution that Dave Soltis is going to be accepting.
Dave, would you accept this? Thank you, Councilman Soltis, do you have any comments?
Thank you, Your Honor. I reached out to the Alzheimer's Association, unfortunately they weren't able to make it here tonight, but I asked them for kind of a press release and they wrote something. They said Alzheimer's is the sixth leading cause of death in the United States, with more than five million Americans living with the disease. In Michigan, over 500,000 caregivers support 190,000 individuals living with Alzheimer's. These caregivers provide an estimated 600 million hours unpaid, valued at $7.5 billion. Challenges facing caregivers include increased emotional stress and depression, and new exacerbated health problems, depleted income, and finance due to, in part, disruptions in employment in their healthcare. The Alzheimer's Association greater Michigan chapters on a mission to end Alzheimer's disease by spreading awareness and raising funds to help with advanced research. Their vision is a world without Alzheimer's disease. June is Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month, and people are encouraged to wear purple all month long to show their support. In addition, dementia-friendly community is a village, town, city, or county that is informed, safe, and respectful of individuals with this disease, their families, and caregivers. Dementia Friendly America is a nationwide network of community organizations and individuals seeking to ensure that communities across the United States are equipped to support people living with dementia and their caregivers. The goal of Madison Heights Friendly Community Initiative is to create a community that supports individuals living with dementia and helps bring meaning, purpose, and value to their lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Soltis. There are no other presentations this evening, so we can go to Item A under the Agenda, Public Hearings. We have one item for review, it's Special Approval 1902 regarding the address 32311 Stevenson Highway, Masterworks. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
Yes, special approval is required to allow heavy auto repair facility in the M1 Light Industrial District. The applicant proposes to use 4,000 square feet of the existing 13,600 square feet building for heavy auto repair. Other uses in the building include a fitness training center and a movie studio. All aspects of the operation, with the exception of repair vehicle storage, must be conducted completely inside the building. The applicant operates an existing business on the adjacent property to the north, which is 32327 Stevenson Highway, and the proposed use at 32311 Stevenson would be an extension of that same business. There is a chain link fence and a rolling gate on the adjacent property that has an existing heavy auto repair facility at the 32327 Stevenson Highway facility. Because the proposed use is located entirely within the structure, it does not require a masonry screening wall. Parking exceeds the minimum ordinance requirements, and the hours of operation would be Monday through Friday, eight to seven. The site plan review committee has reviewed the plan, and all plan review comments have been addressed. Should City Council approve this request, the following conditions are recommended: All vehicles awaiting repairs must be stored inside the building, and all repair work of any kind must be conducted within the building during the phase of work.
Thank you, Mrs. Marsh. Before City Council considers approval, there's a public hearing on this matter, so I will open a public hearing. Does anyone want to address the Special Approval 1902, Masterworks, at 32311 Stevenson Highway? The public hearing is open to discuss this special approval only. No one's asked to be recognized, so I close the public hearing. What's the wish of City Council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Sir, I move that the council grant special approval 1902 at 32311 Stevenson Highway, subject to conditions recommended by staff, which are as follows: Number one, all vehicles awaiting repairs must be stored inside the building, and all repair B, number two, all repair work must be conducted within the building during all phases of the work.
Very good, is there support?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Geddings?
Support.
Thank you, a motion was made by Councilman Geddings, I'm sorry, Councilman Corbett, seconded by Councilman Geddings, to grant special approval 1902 to Masterworks at 32311 Stevenson Highway, subject to the conditions as recommended by staff and as cited by the councilman. Is there a discussion from council on this matter?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
I believe that I would address this to Mr. Hicks, our Community and Economic Development Director. Could you somehow describe, for the benefit of people that are listening, what is heavy auto repair? Could you classify that for us?
So, heavy auto repair would be something where you're doing a little bit more than, you know, some light bodywork and that sort of thing. This could be engines kind of being torn apart, transmissions being rebuilt. This company, and there are representatives here this evening, could probably describe what they do better than I can, but they do restoration on classic automobiles. So, something like that where you're completely rebuilding up would be considered heavy auto repair.
Right. Can we address that to the petitioners that are here tonight?
Is there a representative from Masterworks?
Yes, they could actually explain what they do a little bit better than I could, I'm sure.
That's fine.
Good evening, so could you identify your name and address and affiliation?
Yes, my name's Warner Meyer, I'm the owner of Masterworks Automotive Services.
Welcome, sir.
I reside in 3708 Newport Way Drive, Waterford Hills, Michigan.
Thank you.
Yeah, we basically play with classic and special interest cars. Probably 70% of our business is Corvettes, but we do have a lot of variety of cars in there right now, and we've got Continental Mark II, Eldorado Rome, 52 months jet, I mean, a couple of, yeah, we've got several Cadillacs in there, and then we do some work on some muscle cars too, but they're all special interest cars, and none of my clientele would ever do business with me if I left their babies outside.
Right.
So, all these cars are inside all the time, and occasionally they're about for a road test, but that's about the only time, we don't park them out front because we're not trying to advertise that we've got anything worth stealing inside that building, so. We do have a warehouse on the other side, also at 32295, where we leave the cars if we are waiting for parts or stuff like that, so that's why we don't need parking on the outside for any of these cars.
Yeah, Mr. Meyer, that was basically, I wanted to know what you classify the term "heavy auto repair."
Yeah, you know, first off, I heard that term myself, but I can understand that definition, if that, you know, but yes, we do take our cars completely apart, and it's about as involved as you can do, we strip them down to absolutely nothing, and build them back up, chassis, electrical, wind system, interior trim, you know, paint, whatever.
There's a business, just a few addresses down from you, at the corner of Stevenson and Whitcomb, called Creative Mobility Works, and they modify vans and trucks for the disabled driver, and it's a similar idea, they completely strip down the car to the nuts and bolts and then rebuild it for the intended use.
Well, they don't take them apart as far as we do, they take them apart as far as necessary to make the accommodations for handicapped people to use the van.
Right.
So, there's a number of accommodations that they switch over, that they'll have, you know, they can reduce the effort of steering, they have electrically solenoid-operated brakes and parking brakes, and, you know, certainly the lift mechanisms to lift the wheelchair into the vehicle, and the appropriate restraints.
Right.
Very interesting program they have going there too, very needed and necessary project.
So, Mr. Meyer, would probably turn this more extensive work that would take longer to be in the shop, is that what you consider heavy auto repair?
I guess so.
Okay.
You know, we do tune-ups and brake jobs or whatever people need.
Right.
But our work is very cyclical because of the climate around here, you know, people don't have a whole lot of need for a brake job in the middle of winter in Michigan, so we do restoration to keep our staff busy during the slower months and in the springtime, we're just going crazy trying to fix everybody's car that's got ailments after sitting in their garage over the winter.
Okay, well, thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you.
Your Honor? Oh, Mr. Soltis, please.
Sure. So, you said most of your restorations are Corvettes?
Yes.
Yeah, because I, my father enlisted my brother and I to help restore a '69 convertible Corvette Stingray, and I remember 13 years old sandblasting in the backyard, so, you know, welcome, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Geddings?
I have a question, sir, your movie studio, could you explain that exactly?
Hi, I'm David Miller, owner of KDN Video Works, and we provide broadcast services for the national media, we have a live shot stage in our studio, and we can do live shots with all the major television networks, need be, and plus, we can shoot commercials, and we've done a number of documentaries.
Thank you very much, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, is there other discussion from members of City Council? All right, we're prepared to vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no, the motion carries, congratulations. The next section of our agenda is called Items on the Agenda of Interest to Parties in the Audience, so at this time, I'm going to bring forward Reports D1, 2, 3, and 4. So, the first report is D1, it's the Charter Millage Proposal. I believe the city manager has a special report for this. Mrs. Marsh?
Tonight, council is being asked to consider placing on the November 5th ballot a millage proposal that will move the city forward. I wanted to take about 10 minutes tonight to give a shortened presentation regarding this proposal, because I want to make sure that everyone understands what we are discussing. If this ballot proposal is approved tonight, I'll be giving numerous presentations and hosting meetings throughout the city. If you have a club, committee, or neighborhood group that you would like for me to speak or just want more information, feel free to contact me, and we can set something up. So, starting last September and continuing through late fall, we had four strategic planning public workshops with City Council and staff. Over the course of these meetings, we had a very detailed discussion about what the future of Madison Heights. This answered the question, what do we want the city to look like in the future? This question was answered by envisioning where we wanted to be, and then working backward, breaking down the ultimate vision into achievable steps. The vision became this: Madison Heights is a vibrant, fiscally sound city that is competitive with our neighboring communities in retaining and attracting residents and businesses by providing high-quality services, including public safety and quality-of-life programs, which include economic development, parks, recreation, library, and special events. So, what's stopping us from achieving this vision today? After all, the economy is great and the housing markets recovered, right? Well, not exactly. Even though the economy is better, it is not significantly better for the city. 61.5% of the city's revenue is property taxes that are paid by the residents and businesses throughout the city. During the recession, the city of Madison Heights lost over 35% of our taxable value, which equaled a direct reduction in the general tax dollars generated. When businesses and residential property values started dropping in 2008, the city's taxable value dropped by the same amount. The city does have an excellent financial forecasting process, and we addressed this situation by proactively cutting our budget. We reduced personnel, programs, and capital outlay to keep the city fiscally stable. When the economy started to recover, the city's taxable value was only allowed to grow by the amount of inflation, regardless of how much home values increased. In a year the city's values increased more than inflation, we're forced to roll back our millage. This has caused the city to struggle to recover. Due to the recession and the cap on the millage, the city will not return to the 2006 levels until 2038. That's assuming that there aren't any more economic downturns before 2038, which is unrealistic. This also does not provide actual inflation, as we will be expected to do business in 2038 on 2006 revenues. This is preventing the city from addressing the items that were reduced during the budgets, during the recession, such as building and equipment maintenance, programming for the library and parks, or personnel for police and fire. So, if you look at this slide on the screen, you'll see that in 2008, the city's taxable value was 1.2 billion, which generated 1.2 million for each one mill of taxes. By 2019, this number has dropped to 820,000 for one mill, or approximately 35%. To put that in more reasonable context for the average person, if you make about $60,000 a year, it would be like taking a pay cut to $39,000 a year with no mechanism to increase the revenue. This slide highlights all of the millages that the city levies in the general fund. There are several things that I'd like to point out on this slide, because it's very important to our overall discussion. First, the city levies eight special general fund millages. This does not include roads are dead. Second, the green bar that you see on this screen is the charter millage that the city has unrestricted to fund things like day-to-day operations. That would include recreation, elections, accounting, streets, parks, general maintenance, and information technology. In 2011, we asked the voters to approve two millages. The first one was Proposal L, which is shown on this chart at the top in yellow. This was restricted for the library and basically kept the library open even at restricted hours. The second millage was a millage restoration, shown here at the very top in brown, to restore a part of the general operations that went to keep the basic general services we currently have, including snow plowing, leaf pickup, and street sweeping. These two millages will be expiring next year. As you can see, this green bar is not growing. This restricts our abilities to add new services, personnel, or restore the police and fire services that were reduced. However, the demand for these services keeps growing. So, what has the city done? Due to our strong financial system that I referenced earlier, and our forward-thinking financial forecast, we were able to estimate the downturn. We were very proactive and had an aggressive gap reduction program from 2009 until 2014. Council was forced to make hard decisions and implemented over 200, more actually, 200 reductions throughout the city. The most significant of these were cuts in personnel. These are reoccurring costs and made the most impact. So, what exactly did the city do? Over the five years of the recession, we eliminated 47 positions, in addition to 31 positions already eliminated since 1997. We deferred and continue to defer infrastructure and equipment maintenance, we have had numerous employee union concessions, and we've contracted out or reduced many services in the city. This slide illustrates the cuts to personnel that I referenced. This is the city's largest expenditure. In 1997, we had 227 employees. Today, we have 149. This has affected all departments, but most specifically, the staffing changes have affected the city's three largest departments, which are police, fire, and the DPS. So, police personnel, and this is all personnel, not just police officers, went from 76 to 62. Firefighters, and again, is all department personnel, not just the actual firefighters, went from 40 to 30, and the DPS services has gone from 34 to 22. So, why do I reference these, and why is it so important? Why are we even talking about staffing? Because our demand on services have increased drastically. Since 2009, our call volume for emergency services has increased over 41.9%, while, as you just heard, our staffing has gone down 16% in that same period. Although this chart shows fire runs, this also affects the emergency dispatch system operated by the police department, because they answer every emergency call that comes into the city. So, why a millage and what exactly is being proposed? The proposal in front of council tonight is to ask the voters to increase the city charter from 10 mills to 16 mills. Due to the consolidation of four special millages into this charter millage, the actual result will only be a 3.3684 mill increase to the taxpayers of Madison Heights. The amount levied can be less in any given year, and is controlled through the budget process and City Council. This slide shows how the 3.3684 mills came about. The four special millages currently equal the first column, which is 2.6316. The increase of 3.3684 is in the second column, and really focuses on restoring the Headley Row Black for the library and the millage restoration, while increasing funding for public safety and other needs as council deems necessary. This could be parks and recreation, economic development, downtown development, or it could just not be levied. It is the plan to move, to have a more community-engaging budget process going forward. We have already planned to move to a multi-year budget, so hopefully resident input will be incorporated into the budget as we determine what these other needs are. The number-one question I've already been asked is what is this all going to cost? For the average cost of 36 cents per day per household, we can make sure that we live in a safe city with the community features that reflect our daily lifestyle. We would be building a quality city for a quality life. In 2020, the average market value in Madison Heights is estimated to be 115,820 dollars, with a taxable value of 38,020 dollars. So, as you can see on the screen, the total city cost in 2020 would be 961. This millage, if approved, would go into effect in 2021. The state has estimated a 1.7% increase only, which would make the taxes 1,00108. So, what exactly will this millage allow us to achieve? First, it will stabilize the funding for general fund operations and library services. Currently, two special millages for general operations and library services will be expiring in 2020. We will consolidate these and two other special millages into this one charter millage. It will also allow us to improve emergency services by adding three firefighters, two police officers, and one emergency dispatcher. The addition of three new firefighters will immediately go into increasing the average daily staffing level, which will decrease the frequency of the fire engine and ambulance at Fire Station 2 as left unstaffed. The unstaffed vehicles at Fire Station 2 occur when the daily staffing level fall below eight firefighters. Currently, we average about 6.5 firefighters per day. Also, the staffing of all frontline vehicles would decrease our emergency response times throughout the city. This will allow us to address deferred capital assets, such as equipment, vehicles, and building, which we have not been able to properly maintain due to lack of funding. We can increase quality of life amenities by using a participatory budget process and the upcoming citywide master plan and Parks and Recreation Master Plan update to implement improvements requested by residents. Examples could be play structures throughout city parks, splash pads, walking trails, trees, special events, and downtown enhancements. This slide references back to the slide that I illustrated earlier, so this would demonstrate what the millage would look like if approved, and as you can see, the green bar that we talked about earlier not growing is growing in this case, and you no longer see the yellow and brown, so the library and millage restoration would be rolled in. However, I would point out that even in 2021, the bar still is not as high as it was in 2009 and 8. So, what if the millage is not approved? Everything remains as is. Public safety services will remain as is, however, calls for more service will require more reliance on mutual aid, and we would continue to defer certain infrastructure and equipment maintenance. So, in conclusion, approval from City Council tonight empowers the voters of Madison Heights to determine the future of the city by placing this millage on the ballot on November the 5th, so they would not be approving the millage, they would just be approving to ask the voters tonight. That's it.
Thank you, Mrs. Marsh, are there any other reports before I ask council?
No.
Okay, what's the wish of City Council regarding this matter? Mrs. Marsh, do you have recommended language for a motion?
I don't, well, I'm not in the agenda item. So, legal counsel has already put together the resolution, and council would be approving the resolution proposing the charter amendment proposal.
What's the wish of City Council regarding adopting the resolution proposing the charter amendment proposal?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mrs. Scott?
I move for the council to adopt the resolution to have a charter millage proposal put on the November 5th ballot, and do you want me to reiterate or go on? That's in the thing?
No, that's fine, you refer to the order, that's clear enough.
Okay.
Thank you, Mrs. Scott, is there support?
Mr. Mayor, support.
Mr. Geddings, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
A motion was made by Councilwoman Scott, seconded by Councilman Geddings, to adopt the resolution proposing a charter amendment proposal to go before the voters of Madison Heights on the November ballot, 2019. Is there discussion from members of City Council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
I have a question, probably of the city manager. If a citizen wanted to find out, adopting this millage proposal, what it would mean personally to their taxes each year, who would they contact?
They can contact the city manager's office, or they can also contact Finance.
Okay.
And I will be doing several presentations throughout the city.
Right.
I'm going to try to do a couple of live Facebook events, so residents can watch it at home and engage with me back and forth from the comfort of their own home, and I'm also doing several community events, so if they even have in a neighborhood block party or a cookout, and they want to invite me over for a hamburger, I'll be more than happy to talk to them about it.
Right.
So, I'll talk to anybody about it, so, and I'm always here, so my door's open, they're welcome to stop by, and eventually, we will have, I was waiting until council approved or does not approve this tonight, we will have some information on our website, so there will be a more comprehensive Excel spreadsheet, so if they know kind of where they are with the taxable value, they could look at the sheet. So, it'll be set up by 10,000s, so it won't say like 38,000, but it'll be 30,000, 40,000, so they can look at it and kind of gauge their own self where they would be.
Right, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to comment and thank our fire chief, our police chief, and our DPS Department Director on giving their interpretation of how it would benefit our citizens of this millage in the past, and I wanted to make sure the citizens understand if you are going to have Melissa or a representative from the city come to explain this at your club or gathering, they really can only- from the city come to explain this at your club or gathering, they really can only provide information, they can't advocate one way or the other, but they will provide you all the information that you're requesting, just so you know ahead of time that that's their limitation. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I think some of the facts are interesting. If the voters approve this, this would take the average property owner back to the year two thousand ten. The same amount of city taxes that person paid in two thousand ten, we'd ask him to pay again. I think that's an interesting fact. It's a little confusing how we say we're increasing from ten to sixteen. However, after it all shakes out, it's only an increase of three point three six eight four. I think that fact should be emphasized, that the voters are only considering an effective increase of three point three six eight four. That's very important to understand. And then, the history of what the city had to do to get through the recession. I mean, those are just facts that we had to live through, and that we, we can identify all those. So, that report was right on explaining the history of what's happened to the city, you know, thanks to our unions of being so cooperative, thanks to our taxpayers of weathering the storm. But despite all that, there was permanent damage to the revenue structure of all cities in Michigan. So, I think you're hitting the right notes on educating the public, so good, good first step. Any other discussion from council?
Your honor?
Yes, sir.
So, I appreciate what the overall goal of this is, and I understand the need, but I have a hard time pulling the trigger effectively for this hail mary pass at this point. This will disproportionately hurt all of our residents on a fixed income, it's gonna hurt small businesses who are right now trying to expand in our city, and it's going to stunt some of the growth that we've been pushing. And I don't think that the timing is necessary right now. I believe that we're on a really good structural path, we're seeing growth and development in the city like we haven't seen in decades, and to me, this runs counter to that. This will hurt the same type of development that we said that we're shooting for, this will stifle our residents' abilities to stay in their homes and take any of their excess income into fixing them up, thus reducing code enforcement needs. I mean, there's, there's a lot of challenges I see with asking for this additional tax increase right now. I think if this were a couple of years down the road, and we're not seeing the growth that we're seeing today, if that doesn't continue, I'd be much more in favor of it. But right now, I don't see the need for this, and I will remind the public, our tax rate is already one of the highest by percentage in Oakland County. So, this is only gonna increase that even more, and we're competing with businesses and home buyers from all of these local communities, we need to understand that this tax rate matters in their review of whether or not they're gonna move here, set up a business here, set their home here. I just don't think it's a good thing to do, I think it's really bad for our seniors on fixed incomes, I think it's really bad for inspiring new homeowners and new businesses, and expansion of business. I believe it would be good for our public services. I believe that if, if this is put to the voters, they will see benefits related to our parks, our public safety, our roads, they will see those benefits, but I personally worry about the cost, and I'm voting no tonight.
Thanks, Mr. Bliss.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Gettings.
I tend to disagree with Councilman Bliss, but I think it's a good concept that's had a few meetings that we contributed to, along with the staff and the city manager and the finance gal, that I think we should at least put it out there on the ballot. It's got a lot of good ideas behind it, shifting the money a little bit, and things that we need to do to make it an inviting city, parks, recreation, good city services, good police and fire, and I think we should at least put it out on the ballot for the people to consider. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Is there other discussion from city council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mrs. Scott, please.
I think the important thing about this resolution that we're hopefully gonna pass tonight is the beauty of that, is that our citizens will look at their own individual cases and see, can they afford this, and also, is it worth it? I think they will be getting a lot of benefits. For instance, it will help our employees do their job much better, if that's possible, 'cause they do a great job already, help our police and fire. But I think the beauty of this whole thing is to listen to the information that's presented to you, to get your personal amount of how much that's gonna affect your personal budget, and then vote accordingly. And I thank the city for doing the research on what it can bring to our city, as I believe that, I'm on a fixed income too, and I know that the benefits that we will gain from this are gonna be a personal decision by each one of our residents, but I would like to make sure that they get all the information they can and inform themselves. Don't go to the polls without knowing what you're doing. And please vote.
Yeah, it truly is in the hands of the voters of the city of Madison Heights. This decision is to just include it on a ballot for those voters to consider. Other discussion from members of council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
I will be joining Mr. Bliss in voting no on this resolution. I think, in my opinion, and let's understand what we're doing, we're combining, yes, about half of that is consolidated, it's existing, I almost said mortgages, existing millages for library, for vehicles, and so on, but it's being baked into the charter. It's no longer subject to periodic review, for example, that portion by the library is not anymore subject to the, to the voters on some sort of a basis, it's permanently baked in. But I think most concerning to me is, is the analogy of while we're rolling back the taxes to two thousand ten, but let's understand something about the year two thousand ten. The market crashed in two thousand eight, but it's a few years before property values and taxes catch up with that. So, realistically, two thousand ten was the high watermark of taxes, and I would respectfully suggest that the average resident in Madison Heights is not making proportionately the same income that they were in two thousand ten. I don't think it's an accident, we talk about the recovery, people are going back to work, yeah, but they're not going back at the same, same, at the same rates that they were before. I don't have to tell you, UAW guys who are making forty, fifty, sixty dollars an hour are twenty-eight, they're working two and three jobs. So, whereas you suggest the, or where, I'm sorry, whereas it was suggested that two thousand ten going back to that is some sort of panacea, that was the high watermark of taxes in this community. I'm concerned, and I think this is part of what Mr. Bliss was saying, that long-term, I think there will be a short-term hit, there will be, obviously, a revenue increase. I'm concerned, looking down the road, that, that putting this kind of anchor on our development is gonna slow it down at some point. The first downturn, I think we're in trouble. I think, I think when we have to start to compare our millage rates with other communities, and I don't know why I kept remembering it, back about forty years ago, when I started selling homes, I had a little chart I carried around with me, and, 'cause one of the usual questions was, well, who's got the highest tax rates? Normally, even though they, I tried to convince people to look at what's it gonna mean every month in your payment, inevitably, it came out to who's got the higher millages. And I remember, back in the, well, it would've been late seventies, early eighties, places like Royal Oak Township, places like Oak Park, places like Southfield were the ones that had the, the high millage rates. Now, that obviously was to compensate for their average value. Madison Heights, and that was a big selling point for me back then, was to say, look, we're in the middle, we're very affordable, we're very middle-class. You know, you put this kind of an increase, depending on which school district you're on, and I, I'm not gonna quote without that chart in front of me, but we're gonna be like fourth and sixth, highest in Oakland County, in Oakland County. And that is one of the, that is one of the metrics that people look at when they're looking to expand, so. Now, having said all of that, I've sat here with the council over the past twelve, fifteen years, and I know what we went through, to hire another fireman, to hire another policewoman, all that went into that, and it's been a struggle. But I'm not willing to try and cheat the process, I'm not willing to try and accelerate at the cost of, of our future. I don't, I think, I think Madison Heights, the things that have made it a good investment for businesses, for homeowners, for fifty years, has been its affordability and its numerous amenities, and I don't think you can cheat that. That was, that was a process we built up over the decades, over the years, so. It's a legitimate, it's a, it's a, I don't dispute that this is a valid option, it's just not one that I'm willing to go with. I don't, I don't think this is how we do it, I don't think this is how we improve our long-term valuation and our revenue, so. I'm sorry, but I'm not gonna be able to go along with this this evening.
Thank you. Is there other discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
So, I'm the newest member of council, and last year, we went through a goal-setting for our budget, which was a horrendous process, and in all my years of financial planning, I never went through anything like that because there were so many unknowns, and I couldn't get a straight answer on how much money were we talking about. This year, Mrs. Marsh completely revamped it, and she set it up in a way that made sense, and she gave us our options, and within those options, there were, this is what we can do with our current millage, and this is what we could do if we had that little bit more. One thing that I think everybody wanted to do was hire, and I know, and I may be wrong on this, I know I did want it to hire more public safety, and there was a discussion about maybe we should have a public safety millage, and we went through the pros and the cons in this, because it's really hard when you are a taxpayer, and you get your tax bill, and you're like, there's this thousand dollars, what is it? Well, fifty dollars here, and a hundred dollars there, and having all these different millages, and I never use the library, and I never call the police, why am I doing that? And I like that this sort of rolls everything in. The, you know, we have a couple of millages that are going to be up for renewal, we're paying them, doesn't matter if you wanna pay it or not, it was voted on, we're paying for that already, and by rolling this in, this just gives council, the way I see it, the flexibility going forward, and as someone mentioned, I think it was Mrs. Scott, and Mr. Gettings, actually, we're just voting tonight to put this on the ballot, that's all we're doing right now, and then it is the residents' responsibility, over the next few months, to get the information and to say, well, if this gets approved, I will be paying X amount more, and I can see the benefit of that, or I don't see the benefit of it, and that's how they're going to vote, but I don't think that it is fair for us to not even allow our residents that option to vote on it. So, I will be voting yes, and allowing our residents to make their own informed decision.
Thank you. Other discussion from city council?
Your honor?
Yes, sir.
So, I respect my colleagues on the other side of the aisle, but I agree with Marjane Scott and Councilor Graftene, where this is just for us to vote, to allow the public, the citizens of Madison Heights, to decide for themselves. I don't think we have the right to decide for them, I think they should decide for themselves. You know, they, it was a, I'm not gonna get into it, but it was that we voted on marijuana, I mean, because that was, that was the right that everyone wanted to do, and then so forth passed, but, so I think, you know, if we can do that, we should be able to allow the residents of Madison Heights to think about the public safety, what kind of public safety do they want in the future? You know, do they want just broken-down trucks, and, and less police officers and less firemen, or do they want a strong public safety city? And I think the cost is worth that. I've worked in, in areas that were high crime areas, and believe me, if you wanna ruin the tax base, you just have a high crime area, and everyone's gonna move out. We're doing a fantastic job with hotels, our police department is taking care of that, and eradicating everything they can out of those hotels, and making it a more safer, safety city. So, I'm, I am gonna vote for this, in order to put it on the ballot for the citizens to decide.
Thank you. Other discussion? All right, let's vote. All in favor?
Your honor?
I'm sorry?
I'd like to request a roll call vote.
Oh, of course.
And also, as a clarification, it's a four-three majority that's needed, not a supermajority, correct?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Correct. Okay, will the acting clerk take the roll call vote? If you're in support of adding this to the ballot in November for the voters to decide, your answer is yes. If you do not want this added to the ballot in November for the voters to decide, your answer is no. Will you take the vote?
Councilman Corbett?
No.
Councilman Gettings?
Yes.
Councilor Graftene?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scott?
Yes.
Councilman Soltis?
Yes.
Mayor Hartwell, oh, excuse me. Mayor Pro Tem Bliss?
No.
Mayor Hartwell?
I vote yes. Issue carries five to two. We can continue on the agenda. The next item is Report D two, amendments to the fiscal year two thousand eighteen, nineteen budget, and the carryforwards. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
Yes. The state of Michigan's budget law requires that any budget amendments be approved by city council. The budget amendments are submitted to ensure that the fiscal year two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty budgets are in compliance with state law. If the city council concurs with these recommended amendments, council should approve the implementation of these amendments and appropriate the necessary funds.
Thank you. What's the wish of city council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move that the council approve the amendments of the FY eighteen nineteen budget, and including the, can I just refer to it as the carryforwards? Is that sufficient, or do I have?
That's fine.
And the carryforwards, sir.
Thank you. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Graftene?
Support.
Thank you. A motion was made by Councilman Corbett, supported by Councilor Graftene, to adopt the amendments to the fiscal year two thousand eighteen, nineteen budget, including the carryforwards. Is there discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say no. The motion carries. The next item is Report D three, it's the resolution opting out of Public Act one five two. Mrs. Marsh?
Public Act one fifty-two as amended limits the amount that public employers can pay towards employee medical benefits beginning January first of two thousand twelve. City council is required to make an election for its choice of compliance for the subsequent calendar year annually. Given that all of our city's collective bargaining agreements approved by city council provide for a ten percent employee premium sharing, council is requested to opt out of Public Act one fifty-two as allowable under the state statute for fiscal year two thousand twenty.
Thank you. What's the wish of city council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mrs. Scott.
I move for council to pass a resolution requesting to opt out of Public Act one fifty-two as allowable under that statute for the fiscal year two thousand twenty.
Thank you. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Graftene?
Support.
Thank you. A motion was made by Councilwoman Scott, seconded by Councilor Graftene, to adopt the resolution opting out of Public Act one fifty-two for fiscal year two thousand twenty. Is there discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. The next item on the agenda is D four, that was added earlier tonight. It's the consideration of the recommendation from special environmental counsel and the city attorney regarding the matter Sakura v. Madison Heights. What's, is there a report first? What's the wish of city council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move that the council concur with the recommendation of special counsel and the city attorney's office with respect to actions involving the lawsuit Sakura v. Madison Heights.
Thank you. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Graftene?
Support.
Thank you. A motion was made by Councilman Corbett, seconded by Councilor Graftene, to adopt the recommendation of special environmental counsel and the attorney regarding the lawsuit Sakura v. Madison Heights. Is there any discussion? Let's vote. All in favor signify by saying aye. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, no.
Sorry, Mr. Soltis, you have discussion?
No, can we have a roll call?
Oh, of course you can. The acting clerk will take the roll call vote. If you support the adoption of this recommendation, your vote is yes. If you oppose adoption of the recommendation, you'll say no. You can begin the vote, thanks.
Councilman Gettings?
Yes.
Councilor Graftene?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scott?
Yes.
Councilman Soltis?
No.
No.
Mayor Protemblis?
No.
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Mayor Hartwell?
I vote yes. The matter is carried by a vote of five to two. The next item that we're bringing forward on the agenda is Item F-1, A Bid Award or Purchase Regarding the Nature Center Trail Enhancements. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
Yes. The adopted fiscal year 2020 budget includes funding for trail enhancement project at the Red Oaks Nature Center pursuant to a cost-sharing agreement provided for in the lease agreement with the Oakland County Parks and Recreation. The project involves resurfacing the north loop of the Nature Center trail system, creating a pedestrian connection from the Habitat Trail to the Hill Street and necessarily, and necessary restoration as required. The ongoing trail enhancement program at the Nature Center is serving to maintain the walkability and safety of the trail system for the benefit of park patrons, and is the only one, is only one shining example of the success of the partnership between Madison Heights and Oakland County. Staff and I therefore recommend that council approve the funding for the Nature Center Trail Enhancement Project in a not-to-exceed amount of $27,500. This is Madison Heights' share of the total $60,000 project cost approved by the Oakland County Parks at their commission meeting of June the 5th. Funding is budgeted and available for this project.
Thank you. What's the wish of city council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mrs. Scott?
I move for council to approve the funding for the Nature Center Trail Enhancement Project in a not-to-exceed amount of $27,500.
Thank you. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Gettings?
Support.
Thank you. A motion was made by Councilwoman Scott, seconded by Councilman Gettings, to approve the funding for the Nature Center Trail Enhancement Project in an amount not to exceed $27,500. Is there discussion?
Your honor?
Yes, sir.
I just want to hear if there's been any response. Last time that we allocated money to the Nature Center, I requested staff send a letter requesting that our citizens be allowed to park for free. It's effectively double taxation. You know, our residents are paying their taxes to pay for this building and pay for these trails, but then in order to park at the Nature Center, they need a parking pass that they have to then pay the county for. It doesn't make sense to me. I'd love to hear if they've given us a reply.
Mayor?
Good question.
Funny you should ask. I met with them at two o'clock today. So, I did send a letter about, right after you asked, about a month ago, and we scheduled the date for two o'clock today. I met with Gary McGilvery and Dan Stensel and Sue of Oakland County Parks. We had an extensive conversation centered around Oakland County's parks' commitment to Madison Heights and this end of Oakland County, but they did agree to move the fee for parking into the actual Nature Center. So, there's a fenced-off gate there, and there's probably ten parking spots that are at the Nature Center. They currently charge parking fees on the road as well, so they are going to eliminate all of that for our residents, but not in the actual Nature Center, but all the other parking would be free for our residents.
Your honor, if I may, I see that as progress, but it's not where I'd like it to be, particularly for our residents who aren't as physically able, or residents with young children that we're now asking them to park in the road and then walk into. In both cases, I just, I don't think it's acceptable, and we continue to spend money. I mean, it is our property, and I appreciate everything that Oakland County does and has done to help us keep that open and all of the investments that they've made, but at some point, our residents who are paying taxes, who own that property, should be able to park in it without any parking pass.
How much is the cost of the Oakland County Parks parking pass?
I don't know, but I can look it up.
I think it's like fifteen bucks or something.
Something like that. I move to allocate thirty dollars or what, the cost of two parking passes, if for first-come, first-served basis, for someone with a handicap sticker, I mean, if it's just a matter of providing access to the disabled.
The pass is on the vehicle, not the spot. So, that would be an alternative, if they were to give us a few spots that were designated first-come, first-served for Madison Heights residents, that I would be okay with. That plus the street, that makes a lot of sense. But to give us the street, like I said, there are those who would like to enjoy the Nature Center that aren't physically able to go that far, particularly, you know, they'd be in the road. I don't know. I would prefer that we extend that conversation. I like that they've gotten somewhere. That is progress, and I appreciate staff was able to do that. I'm really excited about the fact that there was progress after so many years of it just being the fact of the matter, but I think we need to go further. I think we need a few spots at least that are free to Madison Heights residents to park in.
Of course, accessibility to the disabled is paramount to our jurisdiction of our public land.
And young children, too. I mean, to be fair, your honor, a mother walking multiple children in the road does not sound like a good idea to me, just so they can get their free parking. In either scenario, it's not something we want as a city, and so I'd encourage us to expand those discussions, and at minimum allocate a few spaces for Madison Heights residents, but ideally, Madison Heights residents to park for free.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
How many spaces are there at the Nature Center? There, it's not a very large parking lot to start with.
They estimated about ten up at the Nature Center past the gate. One of their objections is they felt that they did this to all the, all the parking spots, they would have to do it in all of their parks countywide, and they were not willing to do that. They also asked for things that I was not willing to give from the city. So, at this point, I think Gary McGilvery and myself both agreed that this was as good as we could get at this point, but we can keep trying. I mean, we've been trying for years to get this. So, I mean, this was a small success, but to Mark's point, I understand and feel the same way that we are paying on the city side as well as the county side, and I did find the purchase for the annual vehicle permit is thirty dollars per Oakland County resident, but if you want for two vehicles in the same household, the second one would be fifteen. There are reductions, twenty-two dollars for seniors, and there are also discounts if you're military or veteran or disabled. So, that's the cost. But we can keep trying. Can't promise we'll make any further headway at this point, but we will definitely keep trying.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Yeah, having spent numerous, over a thousand hours working at the Nature Center for the first ten years it was open, I really think that the thirty dollars is a little bit steep at some point, especially for families. I appreciate the fact that they have handicap parking, but I also want to make sure that the community is aware that they can always use volunteers at the Nature Center, and the Nature Center has always offered, in this new plan, for you to get credit for any volunteer hours you put and get good points, and you will then up给你 your pass at no cost, and you can come and park there anytime with your vehicle. So, there are options besides the one that our city manager has mentioned.
Thank you, Mrs. Scott. Is there other discussion?
Your honor?
Yes, please.
Just one note on this. There aren't many properties that have this type of a relationship with Oakland County in their park system. They own the majority of their parks in the park system. With the Nature Center, we own it, and this $27,500 that we're approving funding for the trail is conceivably because we want our residents to walk on that trail, on the trail that our residents own, and so I just, I don't, they've done us favors in the past. At some point, we're going to have to either break away, or they're going to have to give us the ability for our residents to park, because our residents own that trail, and they should be, you know, if we're paying $27,500 of taxpayer money to be able to work on that trail, they should be able to drive up, park, and use that trail that we're funding. Otherwise, we should invest in other parks that are free, completely free, that any resident can go to.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
So, we only have about ten or so parking spots. Where does everybody park when those are full? Because that, that gets full really quickly.
Your honor, they currently can park on Hells, which are the parking spots that they now have agreed to do for free, and they sometimes can park in Simon's School and walk in through the back gate. I don't know that everybody does that, but...
You do know.
So, they can, they can either park in the ten spots at the Nature Center, or they can park, as we had one of our strategic planning sessions there, people had to park on Hells, which technically they would, in the past, have to buy a sticker for.
I mean, of course, persons with disability are a rare exception. They need different accommodations, but the, the parents taking their multiple kids, I think they intend on walking the mile trail, so I mean, the extra hundred feet outside the gate, I, I'm not too concerned about.
In the road, no. That's the thing, you can't get in sidewalk-only, so you're walking
It's paved now, it's, we have a sidewalk.
But it's in the road, so if somebody is driving, I mean, you are in the road. But I get what you're saying, and I appreciate the comments from everybody, and I don't mean to belabor the point. At some point, though, we continue to spend tens of thousands of dollars investing in the Nature Center. I want our residents to park there for free.
Very good. Is there other discussion? All right, let's vote. This is the motion regarding the Nature Center Trail Enhancements. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. The next item we're bringing forward is Item F-2. It's the Wildwood Park Playground Replacement. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
Yes. In early 2017, the city applied for a Michigan Department of Natural Resources Recreation Passport Grant to supplement the budgeted funds for the replacement of the play equipment at Wildwood Park. As the grant application and plan review process takes a significant amount of time, it was not until March of this year that the plans and specifications were approved, and we were able to begin the planning of this construction. The grant is reimbursing $75,000 of this total project cost. The plans include a playscape, swings, and a variety of other standalone games and other play equipment. The majority of this equipment is ADA compliant and is the design of the playground in general. Three sealed bids were received by the deadline of June the 10th. The lowest qualified bidder is Michigan Recreational Construction. Reference checks were highly positive, and staff believes that this firm is more than capable of providing the city with a quality finished product. Therefore, staff and I recommend that council award the bid of the Wildwood Park Playground Replacement Project to Michigan Recreational Construction of Brighton, Michigan, for a total project cost of $129,462. Budgeted funds have been carried forward and are available for this project.
Thank you, Mrs. Marsh. What's the wish of city council?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett?
Sir, I move that the council agree with the staff, concur with the staff, and award the bid for Wildwood Park Playground Replacement Project to the Michigan Recreation Construction of Brighton, Michigan, for a total cost of $129,462. Funds are budgeted and available for the project.
Thank you. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Scott?
Second.
Thank you. A motion was made by Councilman Corbett, seconded by Councilwoman Scott, to adopt the staff, to concur with the staff recommendation regarding the Wildwood Park Playground Replacement Project, awarding it the bid to Michigan Recreational Construction of Brighton. Is there discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to, to thank the staff, Cory and his predecessors over in the Parks and Recreation area. This project has been coming for a while now, but I'm glad I know it, it includes a number of aspects that were important to the Parks and Recreation Committee as a whole. The ADA compliant aspects of it were important to myself, as well as, as everybody else involved. I think their support of both the council, the Parks and Rec and staff was very helpful. This was a little more complicated of a project as it developed, especially when aspects for children playscapes and ADA compliant started to integrate into the project, but I'm glad it all worked out. Thank you very much, the staff. It was a great project. I don't know if, we covered the design a while back, but it's, it was very well done, very, very well done, so, thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there other discussion?
Your honor?
Yes.
I'd like to echo the sentiments of Councilman Corbett. I think that this is really nice that there is this investment in the parks, first and foremost, but secondly, I appreciate the grant that helps us actually pay for it, and this is a model I think we can reuse over all of our other parks. The play structures in our parks are old, they're aging, and taking advantage of grant money like this to be able to upconvert them is really critically important. What people don't understand is that equipment gets taken out, not just because it's old, but because it's not safe anymore, and once it's removed because it's not safe, now there's nothing there for the kids to play with, and that's a problem. So, I really appreciate staff's efforts, I appreciate the Parks and Rec Board. One thing that was not in our packet was the design and proposed structure. I'd love to be able to not just get that to members of council, but I'd like that to be released on the city's social media channels, so that way residents around, around that park will know what is coming and what they have to look forward to.
When is the estimated date to begin construction?
I don't know, I'll have to look that up, unless you can record.
Or approximately the month or season?
It's tomorrow, right?
I thought I saw, see, I thought I saw September on that.
This year, right?
Yeah.
This calendar year?
Yeah, the only thing that would hold it up would be setting up cement material, and depending on our weather, which is, you know, a little bit questionable. Mr. Mayor, one, one point I was reminded of, I do, as far as the template using the funding mechanism here, that really was, there was a lot more involved in that than just simply fill out the form, put a stamp on it, mail it in. Joe Vitale had a lot to do with it, and I'd like to recognize our former director over there in particular, he did good work, so, thank you.
Your honor, we actually hire a consultant, not to...
I know.
Not to rain on Joe's parade, but we, we do pay for a consultant to help us get
I understand.
the significant amount of grants, so there is money upfront to get that as well.
But we think it's this year. It happens this year.
I do not have that date in front of me unless Cory knows.
Oh, I don't.
Oh, okay, very good.
Delivery issues, too, right?
The children of Madison Heights will get to enjoy this this year. Okay, great. Any other discussion regarding the Wildwood Park Playground Replacement? All right, let's vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. The next item brought forward is Item F-3. It's the scheduled replacement of vehicle number 419. Mrs. Marsh?
The adopted fiscal year 2020 budget includes the scheduled replacement of vehicle 419, which is a 2003 dump truck funded through the Streets Division. As with prior recent dump truck replacements, the city is able to utilize a cooperative purchasing contract through the city of Rochester Hills. This cooperative bid was awarded to Truck and Trailer Specialties for the truck body and other equipment, and Wolverine Freight Liner for the chassis. Vehicle 14, 419 is one of five remaining dump trucks that were totaled and replaced during the 2003 DPS Fair and approaching sixteen years of service. It has a poor condition rating and warrants priority replacement. This truck is used year-round for water main installation, leaf construct, leaf collection, snow removal services, and emergency water main brake hauling. Due to the extensive lead time for both Truck and Trailer Specialties and Wolverine Freight Liner, the expected delivery for this truck is now one year from the order date. Furthermore, the current cooperative bid on this truck is on its second extension and expires on June the 30th. Based on these facts, staff and I are requesting approval for this purchase ahead of the fiscal year. Delivery and payment for this vehicle will take place well after July the 1st.
Okay, thank you. What's the wish of city council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
I move for council to award the purchase of one tandem axle dump truck chassis to Wolverine Freight Liner and the body and other equipment to Track and Trailer Specialties under the terms of the Rochester Hills Cooperative Purchasing Bid, RFP-RH-13-30 as amended. terms of the Rochester Hills Cooperative Purchasing Bid, RFP-RH-13-30 as amended, for a total amount not to exceed $230,000.
Thank you. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Grafstein.
Support.
Thank you. Motion was made by Councilwoman Scott, seconded by Councilor Grafstein, to award the purchase of a tandem axle dump truck chassis to Wolverine Freight Liner and the body and other equipment to Truck and Trailer Specialties under the terms of the Rochester Hills Cooperative Purchasing Bid as amended for a total amount not to exceed $230,000. Is there discussion?
Your honor.
Yes, sir.
I just had a quick question, if I may.
Please.
So if we're not going to get this truck until a year from now, is vehicle 419 going to make it through the next winter, if it's a hard winter?
And will the children of Madison Heights enjoy it?
This year.
Are we going to be down this truck?
That's a good question. We just experienced a relatively mild winter this past winter and we had 422, which is being replaced right now. We're expecting delivery of new 22, 422 in the next couple of weeks. That was ordered a year ago. 422, we experienced is the same 2003, same tandem axle dump truck, same year built, same year constructed. The problem that we're having with these older trucks is the frames are starting to rust, the boxes are starting to rust off, the hydraulic hoses are wearing through. There's expense after expense after expense. 422 was not used once to predict what this winter is going to be or how 419 or 433 or 425 or 424 are going to make it through or 426 are going to make it through this winter. That's hard to say. We've got a very capable motor pool that do their best to keep our fleet on the road and working, but time will tell.
Thank you. Other discussion? All right, let's vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries. The next items I'd like to bring forward are the minutes. Could I have a motion regarding the special city council meeting minutes of June 10th, 2019?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move that the council approve as printed the special council meeting minutes of 6:10:19.
Thank you. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Scott.
Second.
Thank you. Motion was made by Councilman Corbett, seconded by Councilwoman Scott, to adopt as printed the minutes from the special city council meeting of 6:10:19. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. Next item brought forward are the second batch of minutes from the regular meeting of 6:10:19. What's the wish of city council?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Geddings.
Make a motion to adopt the regular city council meeting minutes of 6:10:19 as printed.
Yes, sir. Is there support?
Your honor.
Mr. Soltis.
Support, please.
Thank you, sir. Motion was made by Councilman Geddings, seconded by Councilman Soltis, to adopt as printed the minutes from the regular city council meeting of 6:10:19. Is there discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. All right, we can go back to our regularly scheduled agenda and that would bring us to item B, which is meeting open to the public. If there's anyone here that would like to address city council, please state your name and address and any affiliation and be so kind to limit your comments to three minutes or less. Good evening, welcome.
My name is Mary Bush, 1117 East Hudson, Madison Heights, proud city member of the residents, taxpaying residents. I would like to say thank you to Melissa Marsh for putting together the proposal package for the village. I was a little concerned because when I went to put the city council meeting on the live stream tonight, it wasn't on and I panicked and I was already in my jammies. So I threw my clothes on and came back to the meeting because I thought it was important to hear what you all had to say about that. And paternalism is a wonderful thing, but I want you to know I appreciate the fact that you're letting a city residents vote on this and that's an important piece of this. What I as a resident would like to see is both Councilman Corbett and Mayor Pro Tem Bliss made excellent arguments against it. And I think the premise of it that Melissa Marsh made was an excellent premise for the village. So at some particular point before we have an actual vote, I would like to see a point counterpoint presentation by the city for the residents at a town hall here in the chambers, if you would. So that's my request and I would also like to thank the city for its due diligence in making sure that as a taxpaying resident, that we do not have the liability expenditures of dangerous animals living in the city that could cost the taxpayers a liability in the future. So just want to thank you for that and thank you for your persistence in all that you do. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening. Would anyone else like to address city council on any subject?
Hi, good evening, sir. Your name, address, and affiliation?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilman. So my name is Bill Nalu, I'm president of Interstate Auto Care and I'm a resident of Rochester Hills and I'd like to say ditto to the person that was just ahead of me right now. And I just wanted to say, I guess, is, you know, I consider myself a fiscal conservative and yet I look at this as a small business owner and I guess maybe I'm the only small business owner here tonight. If I may speak to folks, the reason that I'm here tonight is because I want to reach out to the city and say that we, the small business community, have something to contribute as well. I didn't realize I mattered. You know, I close my door at night and I head off to Rochester Hills. And one day Kerry Velmisi from the Chamber of Commerce walked in and asked me if I'm a member of the chamber and I said I haven't been for a while and we got to talking a little bit and all of a sudden I find myself back on the chamber and I start becoming more engaged in the city. And I just want to say how proud I am to be a 19-year resident in the business community here. The folks are doing a really good job and they need to be commended for that. And so I guess what I'd like to say is, is with regard to this village here, one of the things, I think that the perception sometimes is that, you know, better safe than sorry, let's not make this move, let's not rock the boat. And maybe in this particular case here, me being a fiscal conservative, I'd like to err on the other side of that and say that a city that isn't moving forward is probably going down. And so in this case here, I encourage you, here I'm asking you at this point as a small business owner, to move forward. Don't be afraid to put it out there in front of the city and say, we're looking to go here and present that. Present that through social media, sell that as if, you know, you are a functioning body selling something to your customer base, in this case to the residents and the business community. So however way I can be of support for that, I encourage you to do so. So thank you again for letting me speak and keep up the good work. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Good night. Would anyone else like to speak to city council? Meeting is open to the public. Good evening, ma'am. Your name, address, and affiliation?
Martha Bailey, Shelby Township, Michigan.
Welcome.
And I'm just going to speak a few minutes about Boomer and I know we've heard so many lies and then last couple of meetings, we had one stand up here and say, this is over. We know as long as Boomer is in boarding that this is not over. I mean, we're intelligent people, it's just ridiculous that this is over, but it's not over. And anyway, when this first started, I did not get involved because I knew that it was utterly ridiculous that any respectable, honest judge or prosecuting attorney would have thrown this right out. If they even believed that Boomer could possibly be guilty of anything, they could have done their research properly and that would have settled everything. So, and this whole thing was based on a lie. And I have to say, I raised my children and they knew day one that they might get away with a lot of stuff and I knew they were, things were going to happen. But the one thing that they knew they better not ever lied to me because I told them I would put them in another dimension if they did. But this was based on a lie and actually a mother supporting a lie. But anyway, also another thing is, I was really disappointed because I really, the ACO officer that I have dealt with her and she's called me many times to come out and help pick up animals, get them into rescue. And I had so much respect for her, but I certainly don't have any respect for her anymore because she was at that door to illegally seize Boomer. And it was totally illegal, we all know that, you know that, you're in the legal system. And I don't even think they had a search warrant. I don't think they had anything legal to get that dog. Personally, I would hope that nobody ever comes to my door to get one of mine because it wouldn't be good, but thank you and I just hope this is over soon and Boomer is sent back to his owner. And another thing is, you guys thought, none of you realized, you thought you had Boomer and you thought that Justin was going to buckle under because you didn't think he could afford to fight. And things did surprise you guys, but you know, over a year is too long for this to go on and Justin should have his dog back. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Would anyone else like to address city council? Good evening, ma'am. Your name, address, and affiliation?
Sharon.
Sharon Stuckey of Sterling Heights. Welcome back to Madison Heights.
And I'm 65 years. So anyways, I am a Sterling Heights resident and I guess I'm what you call an out-of-towner, but being an out-of-towner isn't that bad because I got a heart this big. I love all people, even people in your city. And incidentally, this lady that just spoke, your resident, she gave one of the girls the finger when she walked in tonight. So that's one of your Madison Heights residents. So people are calling us dangerous. We're not dangerous. We're here trying to fight for a dog. And if it was your dog, mayor, I'd be fighting for your dog or yours or yours. I'm a dog activist. I love animals, I'd fight for a squirrel. I picked up turds off the middle of the road and dropped them across the street to keep them safe. So why don't you just let this dog go home? Get rid of all this boar crap that's going on here. It's just nonsense, just plain nonsense. Let the dog go back. Why do you care if it goes back to Justin? Justin wants to get out of here. He's a 23-year-old boy. Are you punishing him for making a mistake at 23? I'm sure all of you have made mistakes at your age at 23. I know I sure did and I'm still paying for some. Get the dog back to Boomer, get Boomer back to Justin. Let Justin take his dog and get the hell out of the city. That's all he wants. But he's mayor, you have the opportunity to do that. You have the say-so to do that. My mayor says you do. Let this dog go, this is political now, it's like who's going to win? And you have a lot of other things in this city to be looking after. Kids, homelessness, all this man is telling you right here about opening up your parks and charging too much? Forget all this Boomer crap and open up your parks and don't charge your citizens. Just let this dog go. When you do, you won't see me anymore. I'll either be dead or I just won't be bought. So please, just let Boomer go home. I don't have that many more years and I'm telling you, I'm going to be here fighting. If it's five years, I'm going to be here. If it's 10, I'm going to be here. Let the dog go home. End this. We're taking up your valuable time here. I mean, you have so many more things to be worrying about like cars carboning your life there, dump trucks. Let the dog go home and get on with your business. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address city council? Meeting's open to the public. No one else wants to speak? Meeting open to the public is closed. The next item on our agenda will be any appointments or nominations to our boards and commissions. Are there any from members of city council?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Sorry, I got caught here one second here. I would move, we do have one pending vacancy on the zoning board of appeals, it's an alternate seat. I would move to appoint Sean Fleming to the vacant seat expiring 9/28/22.
Thank you. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Soltis?
Support, please.
Thank you. Motion was made by Councilman Corbett, seconded by Councilman Soltis, to appoint Mr. Sean Fleming to the vacant alternate seat on the zoning board of appeals on a term expiring 2/28/22. Is there discussion?
Your honor.
Yes, sir.
With respect, I still don't have an application that signifies zoning board. In the packet, the only two, the only two boards that are listed in the application are Parks and Rec and multicultural. So I don't know if that's been resolved and it just wasn't included in our packet, but until, until I have an application that specifies that board and the reason behind that board, it makes it really tough for me to support it. And I know Mr. Fleming was in the audience, but I know that it's a pretty easy thing to get a new application, but we can't vote on an application that doesn't even say that he wants zoning board. Like it's not in the application in our packet. I'm looking at it right now.
Is there other discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, please.
May I ask when this gentleman applied to be on the commission? Is there a date on there? Because I think all applications are sufficient for one year.
The application I'm looking at, and her clerk could jump in if she has it as well, but the application I'm looking at is from February 13th, but the only two boards that it lists in the application are Parks and Rec and multicultural. Neither of which are zoning. So it's the same issue that we had a few meetings back, that has not changed, there's no different application in the packet. So I just don't believe that we should vote on it until we have an application saying that he does want that particular board.
She's just looking for it.
I understand your principle, Mayor Pro Tem Bliss, you're stating we have an application for a reason. I mean, I know many members of city council perform their due diligence and spoke to this applicant face to face and at least when I spoke to him, he indicated yes, he is interested in the seat. But just because he tells us off the record, I don't know if that satisfies the procedural principle you're stating.
I mean, either, your honor, either we lost the application and it hasn't made its way.
He sent an email after.
Or.
I'm sorry, he sent an email to the clerk's office after and I'm just trying to locate it. It was in one of the informational packets and I believe it just didn't get carried forward to the, to the rest of them. I'm just trying to locate it for you right now.
And so that email is an addendum to his existing application, is what you're saying?
That is correct.
Is that our existing process? Because most people would fill out another application for an additional board.
The current application that he had filled out only has a position for two boards and he was interested in the third one, which was why he called and asked us to add it.
So I recall, yes, that's true. Our application only has two lines and I've seen people handwrite the number three and circle it or number four. So I have seen people hand, you know, modify our form. So I suppose supplementary email after this issue was brought up could, you know, could be accepted as just his amendment to the form.
Can we just, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can we just ask that we defer this to the next meeting and at that meeting we make sure that it's actually in our packet?
Yep, that's fine.
That's fine, I'll withdraw, your honor.
All right.
For the third time, by the way.
Nominations off the table. Other nominations for boards?
Pardon me, you better check with the second though.
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Okay. Other nominations for boards and commissions?
Your honor.
Yes, sir.
There are two. There are two on the, I'll see if I can do any better with the library. We do have two pending on the library board. We're actually short of members in general, but I would like to, to get them reappointed, and we're gonna have to work on getting people to apply. But I'd move to appoint Jeffrey Scott to a term, reappoint, I guess, to a term ending eight thirty-one, two nineteen, twenty nineteen. Who's that, February? It's just a typo. I'm gonna guess that's nineteen.
Two years, so twenty-one.
Twenty-one, yeah. So it'd be eight thirty-one, twenty-one, and Lynn Bucherelli.
Bucherelli.
Thank you. Also to a term expiring eight thirty-one, twenty-one.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I'm sorry.
I second that.
Thank you, Mrs. Scott. The motions were made by Councilman Corbett, seconded by Councilwoman Scott to appoint Jeffrey Scott and Lynn Bucherelli to the library advisory board for terms expiring, are they both eight thirty-one, twenty-one? Do we know that?
Yes.
Or is that some bizarre short term for Lynn Bucherelli?
No, this is when her term expires, so they're both, yeah, she's going to twenty-one.
Okay, so both, both terms
Both until twenty, twenty-one.
Shall extend to eight thirty-one, two thousand twenty-one. Is there discussion? Okay, oh, let's vote. You'd be voting for both of these individuals at the same time. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. They're both appointed. Are there other nominations to our boards
and commissions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to move up the two alternates on the environmental citizens committee onto permanent board numbers.
So you're saying there are two alternates on which board?
On the environmental citizens committee. There appear to be two vacancies. That's Heather Haynes and Joshua Schroder.
If I can, no, I get to do it to you. I don't see, I only, environmental, I only show Alexander Betts. I don't show any two alternates. Am I, was there, was the agenda updated? Did I miss it?
Oh, they're not on the agenda.
It's in the informational packet.
So their applications were included in informational?
They're already on the board.
They're alternates.
They're in alternate positions. We have two regular seat vacancies. She'd like to move the alternates to the regular seats.
You're going to unappoint Alexander Betts?
No, we have two vacancies in addition to him.
We have two vacancies.
We have a vacancy on that expires February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one, and one that expires February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two.
Or we can just defer this, if it's going to cause issues, it's...
No, I just, I just, no, I'm just, I'm looking at the agenda.
I understand that. No, I understand that. They are not on the agenda, you are correct.
Nor is the vacant regular term, which is the only thing I'm questioning.
I believe there is one term that goes until the end of February two thousand twenty-one, and the other goes a year later, February two thousand twenty-two.
That's correct. They were both created, we had two resignations recently, so that both of those were created from that.
So it's just a housekeeping mistake that the, that vacancy didn't make it on this list, the agenda?
Yes, there should be one more vacancy on the agenda that expires February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two, in addition to the two that are listed.
Okay, and, just one, I'm sorry, one more time, what are the names now for the two?
Heather Haynes and Joshua Schroder. They're both currently alternates and have attended the majority of meetings.
So, Councilor Grafstein, will you state that in the form of a motion, if you so desire?
I would like to, I would like to appoint Heather Haynes to the environmental citizens committee for an expiration of February twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-two. I would also like to appoint Joshua Schroder to the environmental citizens committee for an expiration of February twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-one.
And declare their alternate seats vacant?
And declare their alternative seats, alternate seats available.
Okay. Is there support of this motion?
Support.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett, thank you. A motion was made by Councilor Grafstein, seconded by Councilman Corbett, to appoint Heather Haynes to a regular seat on the ECC on a term expiring two twenty-eight, twenty-one.
Twenty-two. Schroder is twenty-two, so I'll state that.
And then Joshua Schroder, appoint him to the vacant seat on ECC expiring two twenty-eight, twenty-two.
Do I do it backwards?
Yeah, he said it backwards, but...
I said it backwards?
You said it backwards.
I wrote what you said.
Heather in at twenty-two, and Joshua in at twenty-one.
Okay, so the motion is Heather for the term expiring twenty twenty-two, and Schroder expiring twenty twenty-one, and declaring their alternate seats vacant.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Good job.
All right, is there discussion on this?
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
Just really quick, I, I don't have much of a problem with it because they're the alternates, and we would traditionally move them up anyway. But one thing that I want to make sure that we do from an administrative side is when there are seats that are vacant, that needs to reflect that on the website, so that way it powers our residents to know that there is a vacancy and to apply. In this case, it wouldn't have made much of a difference because we would promote the alternates to the regular seats. But for these alternate seats, I would like the city's website to reflect that, and right now it shows a full board, so.
I would, actually, I would like to agree with that, and one of the things that we have been doing is, we had people who applied to the ECC who did not get on, and they have been invited to the meeting. So when we send out to all the regular board members and to all the alternates, we're also inviting anyone who's already, who's also applied.
Other discussion?
Yes, I see.
All right. The motion includes these two people together, so you're voting for both of them at the same time. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. The motion carries, they're both appointed. Are there other nominations to boards and commissions? All right, we don't have an executive session tonight, I don't believe there's any other business, so before we close, I'd invite any closing comments from members of council and staff. Mr. Corbett, would you like to begin?
Yeah, just, I, I want to, I just want to make sure everybody remembers or is invited to the, this weekend, the festival in the park, the fireworks and so on. And with the upcoming Fourth of July, it's a long weekend, so I just encourage everybody to, to be safe. And I know everybody loves to use the fireworks and whatnot, but I would remind you to check with our, the ordinance, and it is on the website, I saw that earlier today. There's a few more limitations. You're welcome to fire off whatever you want, but there is a cutoff closer to midnight or eleven o'clock, I forget off the top of my head.
Eleven forty-five.
Yeah. Not one o'clock in the morning. My dog will thank you, and everybody else as well, too. That's all I have this evening, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bliss?
Yes, Your Honor. Really excited to be able to share that the arts board has been nominated for an award. The board has received a lot of well-deserved accolades this year, including us on council naming the arts board as our group of the year. But the MML, Michigan Municipality, has put us up for community excellence award, thanks to City Manager Marsh putting in the application. We are now in the top four cities in voting right now, and if we finish in the top four, then we will go to the convention, and we'll present all of the work that was done in the mural project. And what's interesting is they, they really value the repeatability, the ability for folks to do what we did. And this is such a great application for that, because all you really need is a group of dedicated volunteers who are willing and desiring to change the community, and that's what we had. And all of the fundraising efforts, all of the unique ways that the board went about getting the money for the mural, has been nothing short of phenomenal, and I'm glad that not just our community recognizes it, but that the state of Michigan is now seeing that, too, competing with cities like Rochester Hills and Novi, Auburn Hills, you know, there's some pretty significant cities in there. So I'm really excited about that. I hope that it inspires other communities to empower their own amazing volunteers, like the ones on our art board. And honestly, I'm just really excited for the board, and I hope that everybody will vote. The link to vote is on the city's website, it's on our city's social media, and you can vote once per day. So please make sure you vote, it's really important that you do so. Bring some of that extra attention to the city and to the arts board, and that wonderful mural, which you'll get to see completed at the festival in the park.
Thank you. Mr. Geddings?
Just one thing, Mr. Mayor. As Mr. Corbett said, we're having our festival this Sunday, starting at seven o'clock. It's our thirty-fifth in a row where fireworks is involved. A few years back, we used to have three in a given summer, but now we're down to one. But we still thank all the businesses for their donations and all the hard work that goes into it. Fireworks will be approximately ten o'clock. Hope to see everybody there. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. City Attorney, Mr. Sherman?
Mr. Mayor, I hope everyone has a safe Fourth of July holiday weekend, and nothing other than that, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. City Manager, Mrs. Marsh?
Just have one thing I would add to Mark's comments, that even though you can vote one time a day, so can all your friends and family all over the country. So, I had my family voting in Tennessee, so you can do that, too. And happy Fourth of July to everyone.
Thank you. Acting City Clerk, Ms. Sanchez?
Normally no, but I wanted to wish my boss congratulations on her nuptials coming up this weekend, and I look forward to when she gets back and hearing about it.
Great. Councilor Grafstein?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of things. So, a few weeks ago, we updated our ordinance to allow milkweed, and I just want to, again, encourage everybody to plant milkweed and pollinator-friendly plants. I'd also like staff to look into amending our domestic hen ordinance. Currently, residents are allowed to have three hens, and I would like to increase that from three up into eight. So if staff could take a look at that, I'd appreciate it. Also, this weekend, we do have the festival in the park from, from seven o'clock, and from seven to nine, the environmental citizens committee is going to be hosting a plant exchange. This is something that actually Heather Haynes was talking to me about, and we decided we would do it at the festival of the park. We're not sure how successful it would be, and we didn't want to use a lot of city resources to try and plan an event with limited people who show up. So I will be having our table, my council table, will be where we're going to be hosting this. And basically, anyone who has extra plants that they are looking to swap out, if you have seeds or gardening tools, gardening books, anything like that that you want to pass along, you just need to bring them with the plants, make sure that they're separated and they're labeled so that people know what the plant is, and a little bit of information about, you know, does it need to be watered a lot, shade, that kind of thing. So I encourage everyone to come out. If you are looking to start a garden and you don't have plants to bring, that's okay. Just as long as you're not taking everything on the table, we would love the input from everyone. What else? That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Scott?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two events that are coming up this week, before the festival in the park, I wanted to make sure that folks knew about them. One is sponsored by Oakland County Parks, and it's tomorrow, Tuesday, January fifth, twenty-fifth. It's a hike at the Red Oaks County Park from seven to eight p.m. tomorrow night. So this is a free program, and it features a one-mile hike led by the Oakland County Parks Recreation Staff. You can learn about the Ghost River, which is beneath our park. The Red Oaks Park Complex was constructed on top of the George F., or George W. Q. Drainage District, and so you can find out about that. You're gonna meet at the Red Oaks Nature Center, and no registration is required. I think that's something really interesting to study. Also, we have a workshop, and it will be featured twice in one day, and it's on saving and spending, and money management and budgeting. The first one in the morning is at eleven a.m. at the Active Adult Center. The second one is at five-thirty at our library, and they're both held on June twenty-seventh, two thousand and nineteen. And so I think there's going to be a Certified Financial Educator Counseling there, so that they can ask questions as well as learn a lot of important facts. I also wanted to thank Councilman Dave Soltis for the resolution for the dementia-friendly community. I thought it was very interesting. And in our packets, we saw a letter from Governor Whitmer, she's advocating this resolution. And I wanted to say the sad fact that a hundred and ninety thousand of our Michigan residents, age sixty-five and older, have Alzheimer's disease, but is projected to grow in the year two thousand twenty-five, that's only six years from now, to be two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand. And I know there are some people sitting around this table, including myself, that have had direct experience with the sad disease of Alzheimer's, and we know how it can devastate not only the victim, but the entire family, and how much it's important to get educated about that. Because there are a lot of things that have been added in the last few years that people can get help for, and you really are devastated by that. And if there's any help available, I would suggest that our city tech crew put on that little packet that was included in our informational this year about how to compensate for Alzheimer's, how to be aware of it, and how you can get assistance for yourself and your family. So it was very informational, I appreciate them including that in our packet this week. And thank you today again for bringing that up for our council. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Soltis?
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Councilwoman Margine Scott, I appreciate that. And I just want to thank the rest of the council in support of this. I think it's a great first start. We can start to plan out our strategy to help our city become more of a dementia-friendly city. And speaking of which, in terms of seniors, I reached out, because I've been in healthcare for a long time, I reached out to the Ascension here at Oakland McComb, the CEO, and at another, another hospital, we used to do outreach, community outreach. So I reached out to him and asked if he would be interested in hosting like a senior health fair, where they do basic checks, you know, blood pressure, and blood sugar, and so forth, and maybe some guest speakers regarding dementia, living at home, fall prevention, that sort of thing. So hopefully he'll reach back to me and the city, and then hopefully we can get that organized. That's about it, thank you.
Thank you. I want to thank Mayor Protem, Mark Bliss, for chairing the meeting two weeks ago. It's, you did a fine job, thank you, sir. And I also want to appreciate the Mayor Protem's comments about keeping our trash contractor, GFL, honest. I've been, like many of you, touring the city, speaking to our residents, and the number-one issue by far is the, the service of GFL. It's the number-one complaint I've been getting this year. Despite endless premises and excuses, GFL just never fixes the problem. And so I believe it's got to not just a point of annoyance, but breach of contract. I mean, goes without saying, they violated the spirit of their contractual promises, but I believe they've violated specific tenants of the written contract with the city. And so I would hope that the City Council can get a legal opinion on our, all of our legal options, and in very detail, explaining how GFL has performed, and how that compares to the promises they made in the contract that we pay so dearly for. Waste management, just in general, not the corporate name, is, it's in everyone's lives, of course, right? You take your bags to the street, and so the residents feel they have a good grasp of the value that they're getting, and they're very frustrated by delays. And it just seems like a season after season, it just, it gets worse. Maybe one step forward, but many steps back. And I've heard that they've made some, GFL, the company, has made some staffing changes, and maybe we can wait and see what they change. But we've yelled at them, we've asked them to come in, we've sent them nasty letters and unkind words and kind words, but nothing ever changes in real life. So I think we need to get our attorneys involved.
So I think we need to get our attorneys involved to advise this city council and its residents what we can do regarding the GFL contract. Because I foresee that we're gonna hear a lot more about this, week after week after week after week, of their failures. So I hope to see that this summer, some sort of report from legal. And that just concurs with what Mayor Protem said two weeks ago, and what other council members have been saying for months and months and months. So I don't believe there's any other business before city council, so the meeting is adjourned. Good evening.